Okay. At this time, I'll call the May 6, 2021 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the repertory which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the agenda, we do have a couple of items that we're going to add. We had in our notes here, there are some surplus items that we need to declare as surplus, and we will add that to the agenda. We also are going to add, from our work-study session, is brought up for us to consider the parking lot upgrade for the courthouse, and so that will be our second addition. Our third addition is that we will have a 10-minute executive session at the end of our meeting after other business, and that is for the purpose of attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes, and I have moved that we approve the agenda as amended.
And I'll second that.
We have the motion, we have the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the April 29 meeting, it also includes the fund expenditures of $834,021.32, a wire payment, which is for SD Security of $3,760, and utilities for $8,790.82.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have the motion, we have a second now for the approval of the consent agenda, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commission comments, we'll start with Craig.
Yes. Those, what's been on the radar for about a year and a half now, the North Central Regional Planning Commission has a home ownership program that was funds still available in Dixon County on 2020. Limited funding is available on a first-come, first-served basis until funds are exhausted or the program ends September 31st of this year. This program is made possible through support of cooperation of several local sponsors, I know some of the banks in Dixon County. Did get an email from a patron about the North Central Regional Planning Commission, I gave the other two commissioners and Brad a copy of the three letters, I believe they were with it and stuff, so it's on the North Central, Kansas, Nebraska Heritage Act. Also last Thursday after the meeting here, Janelle and I went to Beloit. Did come away from there, I mean, a lot of information there, but I didn't realize lithium batteries were so dangerous, and I think we'd probably, that's what might start to fire out at the transfer station. The temperature of them can get up to 550 degrees and the paper goes to 400 degrees. I know there's, and there are going to be more lithium batteries and stuff, so we need to make the public aware that they, you know, need to handle them separately from regular batteries. That's all I have, Lynn.
Okay. Just real quick on the North Central Kansas part that they have, is that for people buying, a first-time buyer, or is it any home, or is it a home improvement?
It's not, it's not improvement, it's buying a house.
Buying a house?
Yeah.
Okay. So that'd be good information to get out because...
I know that, and there's, I don't want to say that the agents, there's not all the real estate agents are involved in the, but I remember right, been a year ago since discussion about it, but I know that, and I can't think of the banks that are, there's two or three banks that are participating, not all the banks in Dixon County.
Okay, great. But Ron?
I don't have anything, Lynn.
Okay. Earlier this morning, we had John Holgren here, and he gave us an update on the activities with EMS. The other thing that he brought to our attention is that we do have some cracking cement and separation here at this facility, at the health department, and so we need to turn some attention to that. We took a look at that, and that is something that we might be able to utilize some of the funding that we have for that, so we're going to be gathering more information, and appreciated him bringing that to, to our attention. We also had an update, it was the project manager, and Tom was here in regards to the, over at the jail, and the new addition to the courthouse, and then also, and what was his name?
Brad.
Brad, that was here regarding the renovation. And one of the things they did point out is that there is some difficulty on some of the things that we need as far as, you know, some of the pipe fittings and, and, you know, there seems to be a few shortages out there in the open market on, on lots of things right now, and so they're trying to stay on top of that. I also mentioned that there is a planned event at Emmanuel Church, it's a community-wide though, event that involves several ministers and churches and laypeople for the National Day of Prayer, and that's typically is the first Thursday in May. It was something that Abraham Lincoln, President Abraham Lincoln, had called the nation to prayer before, but also there was actually an official declaration from President Truman, and then following year from President Eisenhower, that you, we have a National Day of Prayer, and typically, most of the presidents since then have gone ahead and recognized and honored the first Thursday of May as the National Day of Prayer. The, I don't have any other comments. Are there any comments, additional comments from the commission before we go to the next item?
I don't have anything.
Okay. We do have a proclamation, so before we would receive or have opportunity for public comments, I will go ahead and read this proclamation. This is a county resolution declaring Economic Development Week in Dickinson County. The resolution reads, whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers, and whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation, and whereas the economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base, whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy, and whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in the regions, and whereas economic developers work in Dickinson County within the state of Kansas, and now therefore be it resolved that the Administrator and Board of County Commissioners of Dixon County do hereby recognize May 9 through 15, 2021 as National Economic Development Week in Dickinson County, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports the expansion of career opportunities and improving the quality of life. Be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners is authorized and directed to transmit and appropriate the copy of this resolution to the Dixon County Economic Development Corporation and the International Economic Development Council. In testimony whereof, the Administrator and the Chairman of the County Commission of Dixon County have herein to subscribe their names and have caused the official seal of Dixon County to be herein to affixed on this May 6, 2021. Is there a motion to declare May 9 through 15, 2021 as National Economic Development Week?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have two copies here that are signed, but we'll give those to Chuck Scott, and as has been mentioned, and we were talking just briefly before our meeting, the, you know, the newspaper has been giving great coverage and a lot of exciting announcements, there's been a lot of economic activity as far as, you know, some businesses that have changed hands now, and they have new ownership, but it shows the investments and also the opportunity that people recognize in our county, and I know the Economic Development Committee and, and this county commission is very committed to economic development and trying to, you know, promote and further that, and I think that just helps in so many facets throughout our entire county and the importance that we have, and, you know, some of those announcements, couple of them adjacent right here in Abilene, in Abilene with Brookville Hotel, and I know Coontz's, and then they had an article the other day about Chapman, the hardware store there, and, you know, I know there's exciting things happening throughout the county, and we keep hearing things about something that could happen in Solomon and Harrington, and, you know, more things in Abilene, so, you know, there's quite a few irons in the fire. Any other comments? We're going to move on to the next item, and that will be public comments, so if there's anyone that has, is online that would want to make any comments or have any questions, we would consider that at this time, and we do have notice from Megan Armstrong. Go ahead, Megan, with your comments, and five minutes is, we have the allowance on that.
Terrific. Good morning. This is Lori Megan Armstrong, 1173 Old Forty, Abilene, Kansas. I was checking in this morning to see if you guys have a date you have in mind here in May to discuss the Kansas Nebraska Heritage Act resolution. We had yet another county sign off on that to protect the personal property rights of their county residents, and I was hoping that maybe you guys were going to put that on the agenda this month, and if you guys need further information, what is the information you need? I sent an email last week, I got a response from Ron saying, "Got it, thanks," but I specifically asked in that email if there was any particular information you guys needed, or data sets, or did you just need thousands of people across Dickinson County to email you? What was the, what was the need for information there?
Okay, thank you. Yes, and I did receive that also, and then I have received comments, had one from Shirley Howard the other day where she had signed a letter, and Curtis Stouffer and Peggy Stouffer, and, and a few others, and, and I did appreciate that you included the letter from Senator Jerry Moran, and he had raised concerns about the 30-30 plan, and appeared he was questioning that. I think it would be good to probably just put it on the agenda at some point so we can officially give consideration to it, and that's all I would have on it, and I think we can do that this month. So Brad, either probably next week or the week after, we could just add it to the agenda for discussion or action, or both.
Thank you.
I don't know whether Doug knows, I haven't even seen anything that says whether or not we have the legal option to opt out. I mean, there's a lot of federal mandates, a lot of federal things, we can opt out all day long, but they're good.
I don't know without looking at that specifically for. I, I looked through the 30-30 to see, but I haven't gone into greater detail than that.
And I think maybe that's a little bit what they're looking for, is that if the counties would express their concern on that, or if they had opt out, and then Brad, as you pointed out, I don't know if that's how much of a choice that actually is, but at least it would, you know, would have the discussion, and I do know there's quite a few people in the county, especially in the rural area, that are concerned that, that this potentially is going to be an obstacle for the way they operate and take care of their individual properties and such, so. Okay. I don't think we have any other comments from the public, and so we're going to go ahead and move to reports of county officers.
Okay. We'll start out with the budget report from Janelle's in your packet, as well as the staff and the report from Dr. Aaron, we've had quite a few changes in staff during the last month, as you'll see, and replaced a couple of those, I know they're at various departments for whatever reason. In the budget report, I noted that the sales tax was down slightly, which would be for the month of February is what we're seeing now. That is kind of typical of every month, month of February, and that too, because coming off of Christmas, we're spending less, but if you look at last year, it kind of dipped as well, so I don't know that that's alarming, so. It has continued to stay up, and even, even this year's is still $10,000 higher than last year's was at the same time period, so I think we're looking fine there, it doesn't concern me too much, so. Janelle indicated there was nothing on any of the budget accounts, any of the departments that she was concerned wasn't there at the beginning, so. Let's talk about the courthouse renovation and construction, we have a weekly meeting, we have a two-week meeting Monday, and I'll just highlight a few of those things, and then I've got some pictures I can show you that I took yesterday of the progress, so. Phase one, first of all, the booking areas you'll see in the pictures is coming along very well, the padded cell was actually installed this week, and, and they're putting the detention furniture in as we speak, the companies are doing that. The entrance doors and all the electronic locks and stuff are installed, kitchen walk-in freezer was installed last week, and the roof access door was installed, so things are going well there. Jumping over to phase two renovation, as you heard Brad Cravis say in the work session, the demo crews are, hopefully will finish the end of this week or very soon next week. I know they're planning on trying to get them either today or tomorrow, so they don't have to come back next week, so, until the jail's ready to be demoed, so. Plumbers and electricians are roughing in the second floor, a lot of the sheet rock is already up on the second floor, masons are getting walls up on the second floor and in the basement. The EPHIS crew, which is the kind of stuck-looking stuff on the outside, will be here, I think, next week to install the lower-level material that is green now, it's a winter-resistant sheet rock that's put up, or a dense sheeting that they put up, and then it gets covered, so that will enclose everything but the windows, and then the window crews are supposed to be in a couple weeks and install the windows on the, on the exterior of the courthouse, so that'll really improve the looks there, so. The new sewer lines are cut in the basement, that's been opened up, and they're getting ready to start installing those, and then the, as of Monday, we had received the improvement cost for the south parking lot, which is what we talked about in the work session, so I'm going to jump on here and try to, I'll share my screen, and I'm going to pull up some pictures and kind of give you a little tour, if I can here of... Try to do this without getting everybody off, if I can. Be able to see part of it, I guess. There we go. So this is, Kathy or Lori, can you guys see that online? I assume you can. This is one of the, okay, this is one of the dorm, thank you, this is one of the dorm rooms, we've got a male and a female dorm room, and these are used, as you guys know, primarily for the work relation people that come and go, that don't, you don't want to put into the regular population, they're getting some of the, now, this is, all these tables and stuff are mounted on the walls, and the tables are bolted to the floor, stainless steel detention furniture, so that was since yesterday morning when I took this picture, so they've been working on that. See if I, here we go. This is a walk-in freezer that was installed last week back in the kitchen area. We have a walk-in drive storage area, which is just kind of where I'm standing to the left, and then the walk-in freezer, and this is looking to the right of where I was just at, this is the kitchen office, food prep area and sinks will go behind here, you can see the hood for the cooking surface that goes over here, the, so that, that's kind of the kitchen area, and what Tom was talking about up here is the high-impact sheet rock that they're waiting on to go in from the ceilings that they're having problems getting, so. Jumping back over to the booking area, this is the central booking that you guys saw last week or a couple weeks ago, the guys were in there yesterday putting in the countertops and the furniture that goes in there, ceiling grids in, and as you can see, all the HVAC stuff is in, and I got a couple different angles of that, just showing the same area. And this is kind of from the other side, the padded cell is this one right here, and then you've got your holding cells along here that they're in the process of putting the detention furniture and stuff in as well, and there's, here's looking in one of those, this is a light fixture, and, and you can see that there's a toilet behind us, of course, in the, the little partition, and then on this little elevated area, there's a place for a bunk and stuff to go in there, so. And of course, the steel ceilings that are, that go in above for the detention. A lot of the stuff that's going in those is right now sitting out here in the garage area, this is the Sallyport, these are the bunks, the beds, of course, are standing on end, that go into those, those cells, into the, the holding cells, and they've got lockers for the staff and stuff back here, but all that stuff's been hauled in and being brought in, and like Tom said, the next big thing will be the garage doors. Next week, they're scheduled to have the concrete contractor in to put the circle drive in out here that goes around and comes in Sallyport, off the street. Now we'll go over to the phase two, which is the courthouse, and right now, where I'm standing taking this picture is looking west from the east, the original east entrance of the courthouse, and this is the entrance into the Sheriff's Department, what used to be the Sheriff's Department, so you can kind of tell, give a little perspective where we're at. A lot of this plumbing on the ceiling you see is still there because it still serves the current jail, we have to have that in place, but otherwise, as we go along, you're going to see very little plumbing, it's still in place, it's all been removed along with the HVAC, and so now I'm kind of looking, standing, it would have been, what would have been the entrance into your old commission chambers? A lot of those walls have been removed, this wall has been installed, so there's things going, going out and coming in, and this is the old commission chambers, and the door into Barb's office, and you can see where they filled in one of the windows here, and that'll all get covered up, and how they're, they filled in the parts of the window openings to make, make it the right size for the new windows. And they've got the door cut that goes outside on the backside of Barb's office, you know, when we enclosed the west end for Leah's office, we really needed to have another ingress-hegress so that we did have something like an active shooter or something, we got a way to get out the backside of courthouse, so we're putting an entrance in there to get out the backside of Barb's area, as you can see the infill around the windows. This is just looking the other way at the backside of Barb's counters, and how those will be, the wall, you know, will come down and she'll have the Plexiglas, what I call bank teller type storefront there when it's all said and done, so. And then looking over at Leah's area, kind of the same, same type of deal, and you can see her vault door's gone, it gets replaced with a regular hard, or a solid-core wood door, so. And the other thing that you may not notice, but the big safe is gone, it's out of there, so it was able to be taken out and got through the doorway, and it has been, been taken out of the courthouse, so.
Is no one going to buy it then, or?
Actually, it went with the contractor, that was part of the demo stuff, and there wasn't really any value to that that we could find, when I talked to the, the safe company in Kansas City, he knew exactly what it was, big model, said it was very popular in late 1800s, but he says, I said, "Well, yeah, with all the painting and design on it, it's really very ornate, really pretty cool," and he said, "It really is." I said, "What's the worst?" And he said, "Not the money to haul it off." He said, "They're a dime a dozen." So we left it to the demo contractor to haul off, and it became their front. So, this is in Marty's Vault, Registered Deeds Vault, which is becoming more office space, but then she had requested the wall be put across there to keep some of the permanent records and stuff back in there, and this could be a work area for people coming in doing research, then this is the front area of her office, her vault door also has come off and been replaced with the, with the solid-core door that's a little more user-friendly. And you probably recognize the front entrance into the courthouse, what was the, the old courthouse entrance? This is the front, in our office, where the walls have been all removed, everything's been taken out, and again, infill on the windows, make them smaller, have less window space. Now we're up on the top floor, this is Judge Sexton's courtroom, it's really starting to take shape with the drops in the ceiling and stuff, this would be his bench back here underneath this area, we're looking kind of east. The walls will all be furred out on both sides and everything too, and all the block walls will be covered up.
Which one of the doors will he come into his office?
He will come through this one right here, which is, comes from his office right into the bench, so.
And then over to the left would be where the inmates are, the...
Correct, that's where you bring the inmates in, or...
The accused.
Yeah, yeah, from the, from the holding cells and stuff, so. Yeah, I thought I had a picture from the other direction, but I guess I don't. This is on the second floor, looking at what used to be District Court, now will be the County Attorney's Office, she'll have two windows there, and it's starting to come together. This is back in the northwest corner of that area, and you can see where these offices now have been built and, and rocked, and have been finished, obviously, but these are both, these are offices, this will be a bathroom back in their office, but their offices are starting to come together, so. And then this is the backside of those two window openings, which would be the front area of the County Attorney's Office, so where their receptionist or whoever they put up there would be there to greet people, and then they have a large work area in the southwest corner, which this window would be looking out over the south parking lot, and now we then filled a couple windows, and, and they'll have one bigger window there, but there'll be one area out here with four people working on, and four corners of the desk, so. The boiler room downstairs, they were in the process of tearing the boiler apart, and the water heater, the old boiler that heated the courthouse, and getting all that stuff out, and of course, that becomes all storage, two levels worth of storage when it's all said and done. And here's your basement, showing the, where the new sewer line will go in, sewer line, you can kind of see the hole in the floor, I think it's right there, runs down here, they just vacated it, and they'll go in and put new sewer line in the basement, tie it over into the women's restroom, and into the men's restroom on the other side, so. And this is just kind of looking at, this will be the men's restroom over here, they've got, they haven't taken it out, getting over to that yet, so. Meeting room, just showing how things are kind of desolate in there, and they're using it for storage right now, so. Then we get down to the other end, they're currently, yesterday, the masons were filling in the original door and window to the, to the 911 center, and they have cut a new door because this wall goes in, the stairwells under new code have to be separated for smoke and fire, so they'll have a door here, but there'll be a new door into the 911 department that'll go in here, this will all be sealed off, and of course, the sewer line's been cut going down through there, and it's been cut over there because 911 will get a, get their own bathroom in there, they won't have to come out to go down to the restroom, so. And this is just showing the, inside their office, they, this used to be the 911 center, we're moving the communication room into the, the old lower section of the Registered Deeds Vault, and this will become two offices and then a little area for them to have as a break area and bathroom and stuff, so it'll be quite a, quite an increase in space for them, so. And that just shows Chancy's office. And that just shows Chancey's office and the sewer line that runs underneath those walls that goes into, we've got a thousand gallon or so sewage tank underneath the ground and all the sewer dumped into and then it pumps from there up to the city sanitary sewer system. So it's the way the courthouse was originally designed. So. And that's just looking back the other way from, from Chancey's office. So. Okay, that's it. Questions on that or?
Good job.
Lot of work being done.
It is. It's coming along. So I'm figuring out how to.
And I'm continually reminded with the way pricing and lumber and all the materials have changed. We're fortunate that we had this project underway.
I'm not sure that we would be able to afford it. Now, if we were to go out and price it, to be honest, but.
So a lot bigger numbers. That's for.
Uh, let's see, we Craig gave me his name. So Craig and probably myself will attend the KCCA conference. I'll get those CP's done. And then I had given you a listing that Janelle and I'd kind of compiled with some suggestions for uses of the relief funding that we've got coming and just a work in progress. Obviously, we're going to add and delete things as we move along. One of the things that we're going to add, obviously, will be this parking lot out here. So. But it does give you an idea of some of the things that you've already approved that we think we can take out of that funding. And some of the other things that we would suggest that you'd be used to, to utilize that funding as well. So.
And important to emphasize what you have, but just to highlight it. That does not impact the, the budget that we have approved. This is relief funding that comes to us separate from assessed taxes locally.
So anything we're able to utilize, use and utilize that funding for prevents us from having to collect any property taxes.
And, and having said that, I, I mean, I do realize that relief fundings ultimately could be a tax or something of a federal level. But it, it also is a situation that we either use it or lose it.
Right.
So if we don't take advantage of, of this particular opportunity, it just means that some other city in some other state or some other city elsewhere, it would probably use those funds.
Glad to get the funding we need to use. So, correct. I think that's all I've got. So.
Okay. Doug?
Don't have anything till we go into executive session. Thank you.
Under notices and communications and during public comment, I did mention that I had received comments in regards to the 3030 plan. And we also have received in the mail, our county news information, newspaper that we have. And then also from Kansas sheriff, they have a publication that they give us. And it, it did indicate and had a picture of, of our new sheriff Davis had attended the Kansas law enforcement training center. And also our undersheriff had gone to that. And so, you know, professionally, they have those things available to improve the skill set, but also for the communication purposes that we would have with other counties and other law enforcement agencies. We do have our budget report Brad had alluded to. And I believe that's all we have. Are there any other notices and communications we brought up? I have nothing. Okay. We will go ahead and move on. We did not, we did have a resolution that has been added. And that was one of the additions to our agenda. And so we'll consider that at, at this time. It is resolution 050621 is to declare items as surplus items. And that way we can take advantage and typically we use purple wave for that. But it is the 2000 Chevrolet 3500 four by four pickup truck. We have a rear ripper attachment off of a road grader, 82 inch tooth bucket for a bobcat steer, stall service body off of a 2005 Chevrolet 3500 pickup truck and three Mosler fire insulated vault doors, frames and hardware. And so we would need a motion to declare those surplus and it's through resolution 050621.
So move second.
We have the motion in the second to adopt resolution 050621. This is declare items of surplus that have been listed. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And let's see, this will need signatures. Oh. Have you take care of that portion? Next item we have is the courthouse parking lot upgrade that had been brought up in our work study session. So Brad, would you want to go ahead and kind of give the summary on that?
Sure. The original plan for the courthouse parking lot that was put into plan several years ago included a milling overlay of the asphalt that's currently there. We have done that in the past where we've, we, it's probably been eight or 10 years ago where we chip sealed it, the parking lot. We haven't done anything intentionally for quite some time because we knew we were going to be doing this or we anticipated it. And so it's, it's gotten to be in pretty bad shape. The concrete barrier down the middle sidewalk is also in pretty, pretty bad shape as well as the sidewalk along the north side. So. It was suggested and we, well, the original plan was just do the milling overlay and utilize the, the original, the current sidewalks. Knowing that we needed to do more than that, I asked Lloyd Builders to obtain a price for us to upgrade that, to remove the center barrier of the sidewalks, replace the sidewalks on the north side and, and go back with the concrete that was flat that wouldn't go drain off to the south. And they have done that with the deductions of the asphalt contractor, the additions to the property contractor, the included excavation of the center barrier and then leveling the surface and compacting it and doing the prep work. The total increase would be $141,620. That is a lot of money, absolutely. However, this would provide, you know, this could provide a 30 or 40 year solution if done correctly as opposed to a 10 year solution with asphalt. And then you'd have to look at either chip sealing or potentially worse, a milling overlay again. And we still would not correct the issues with the center barrier. The reason we want to do away with the center barriers is so that our snowplow, in the morning, whenever we have snow, we are in the past plan is our, and processes, our personnel from the road and bridge would go through there and make a pass with our, with our, one of our snowplows. That's very difficult with those barriers and curves. And so this would allow us to make that pass and, and push that snow right off onto the grass where it could then melt at its own pace and wouldn't be in the way. And we wouldn't have to worry about tearing up the curves and tearing up our equipment by hitting the, the curving. So it would be a good addition for us and we think it would be a, a good enhancement for the project. So.
And I know in our discussion, I mean, I, I think most of us are aware and have heard from a construction standpoint, the durability of the concrete and how in the long run it is a, a better product if you can do it for your budget. So. Any other discussion or is there, we would need a motion to go ahead and proceed with this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll go ahead and give the second. So we have the motion in the second that we go ahead and instruct Brad to proceed to make the arrangements for our contractor for a parking lot upgrade and it'd be cement and that's the description that he had and. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. We do not have any unfinished business or other business. The only item we have left on our agenda is to go into a 10 minute executive session for attorney client privilege. And I would go ahead and move that we go into executive session for attorney client of privilege for 10 minutes, starting at 1140.
I'll second that.
We have the motion in the second. Any other discussion? And this would include our attorney, obviously.
And Brad.
And Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. We'll go into executive session. I guess Brad, all you have to do is mute the.
Close the door now. So.
Okay, yep.
We're back on. So.
We're unmuted now. So. I'll move that we return to regular session from executive session.
I'll second that.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So it is 1150 and we're back in regular session. We did have our meeting in executive session. Attorney client privilege to just get some updated information that is under the attorney client privilege guidelines. I do not believe we have anything else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
We have the motion in the second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We're adjourned. Here's your pen back.